Good evening and welcome to the September twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. Uh, now please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll read the district's mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. Alright, we've now come to the time in the meeting when those who wish, um, to address the board, uh, may do so. I would like to remind each speaker, whether you represent yourself or a group, that you have three minutes, um, in which to speak during this meeting, this portion of the meeting. Um, Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds left and a red card when your time, uh, has expired. At that time, I'll ask that you conclude your remarks. Waterloo is a national leader and character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Throughout our meeting, we commit ourselves to these principles. And, uh, at no time is it appropriate here to criticize the job performance of a specific employee of the district because personnel matters are confidential, they must be handled through the proper channels and not in a public forum. So at that time, if there's anybody that wants to adjust the board, if you could, come forward and state your name and your address. And as you're going up there, the green light should be on the microphone there.
Just press the button.
Okay, yep.
Thanks. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't have to keep it.
Yeah.
Is it, is the green light on?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we're good.
Alright, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Doug Taylor. I reside at two fifteen First Street in Washburn. Um, I was invited by Gary to stop by to, um, come to state what I, uh, was having a current issue with, uh, was with busing for my two children. Um, currently, uh, my children are not able to get on and off the bus at our Washburn resi- residents to go to Orange School, uh, because of our jobs. Um, and I had been in the past using my sister, who lives at four-six-four-two Hoff Road, uh, which is an Orange School bus stop where her two children get on and off the bus there. Um, and I filled out a daycare form at the beginning of the school year, like every other parent did, and mine was kicked back with a decline, uh, because my sister's home wasn't a registered daycare. Uh, my sister watches my children for me, uh, whether they're B-school or not-school, and, um, actually that four-six-four-two address was my address as a child, so it, eh, and I went to Orange, so. Um, I was asking that in my circumstance, and probably a few other people, that, uh, as a family, family using, uh, families' other bus stop, even that when it's inside the schools, the same school's zone, um, and that it's just a different bus stop. It's, it's a, not an actual daycare, but it is, uh, where I want my children to go for before and after-school, uh, uh, to be used as that bus stop. Thank you, Gary.
Okay. Great, thank you. Yeah, and...
Ask questions, Mike.
Yeah, what I thought maybe we'd hear, are you all here to speak?
We're, we're all here together.
Oh, you're together?
Yeah.
Okay. Got you, so, okay, that'll conclude remarks. Normally, we don't kind of have a back and forth, um, during the portion of the meeting. It's a time to a- address the board, and all of us board members especially are available to talk anytime, actually email anytime, um, talk kind of during the day, but, um, with that said, it's, eh, I know it's an issue, we probably do need to get some information out. I know it's been an issue, particularly this school year. The school district's policies haven't changed, and we don't have any changes to the policy proposed around the agenda of our meeting. We can't take any action today, um, in part because of the requirements that we have to post our agenda beforehand when we're gonna act on something, but with that said, is there specific information you needed from the district? I understand you met with Dr. Norris?
Yes, and we had actually, uh, while we were talking with them, my sister started to become a registered daycare. She is with Childware, Childcare Services and starting that so she can be registered, so the kids can get on the bus.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause we were told if she get, starts to do that, that, that they could get the process and the kids could start getting bused.
Okay.
I was just wondering why it had to be so complicated with jumps and loops, uh, to get granted busing.
Yeah, and I'll ask Dr. Norris to...
Well, and, and you raise a good point, and thank you guys for coming tonight. Uh, we have, uh, talked quite at length to Mrs. Turner. We have been following the same policy for about twelve years, but the reason these fine people have been, uh, caught up in it is because we frankly are a former, uh, bus provider. First student, uh, had not followed our rules. We're not sure exactly how long, but we know it's affected them in the last year or so. Um, we, interestingly enough, Cora just checked with Cedar Falls, they've got the exact same rule, but we haven't done a thorough investigation around the state yet. Um, we did have, just for your information, tonight, board, we had, uh, three hundred and twenty-eight requests, uh, in this category this year for daycare-like transportation, or I should say dropping off at a point other than the primary residence. And two hundred and four of the three twenty-eight were approved, uh, a hundred and twenty-four were denied, and of that hundred and twenty-four, forty-three did not have a bus in the area. But as these folks have said, there, there is a bus in their areas, uh, but eighty-one were denied on the basis of a non-registered, uh, provider, and a number of those have started, uh, the ser- started getting daycare, uh, started the training process, and I think, Cora, you wanna come up and, um, thank you guys, you wanna just wait for, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you for he- hearing us out, and, uh, appreciate meeting with you, and, uh, this new school is looking great so far.
Cool. So just, just hang around for a second, you'll hear the discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Cora.
As indicated, we, this has been a process that this district has maintained for the last twelve years that I've been in the position. Um, and, you know, and we have followed the policy. I've also checked with, um, my attorney today with Steve Wagner, just to go back and review the policy, that we see we're following the state guidelines. It's up to a district to make changes, and at this time, we chose to stay with the state guidelines. I checked with Cedar Falls today, and they also write in print indicate that they, the district does not provide busing services for the purposes of daycare unless to a licensed daycare provider. So it is something, and I do plan to check with other, um, districts, uh, surrounding districts also within the next few days.
Okay, I, okay. We can do that, I'm not sure it makes much difference whether the districts do, we need to do what's right for us.
I understand.
And my understanding is first, we don't have a Waterloo policy, so by default, we're following the state guidelines, correct?
It's not really by default, it's that the district has looked at the policy that the states provide and has decided to stay within the state guidelines that we provided for a number of years.
Okay.
As Dr. Norris indicated, it's just this year recently that it's come to our attention in my office, that, uh, the busing services was not following the, uh, the guidelines, and that's why we took it over and tried to make sure that we maintain it consistently.
Okay, but as a board, we can...
You can do whatever you wish.
We can develop whatever policy we want, so I think that's where we need to head, is what's, what's the right for our district. And, uh, in this case, as I understand it, uh, they do get on a different bus.
Right, right now, they need to drop off, mine and my sister, to and from.
Okay. But normally, there would be, and hopefully, if, if the changes we have in the mill for next year work out, that process should be simplified, so if it's in the same attendance area, we should be able to easily reprogram our software in real time in order to say, you know, on this particular day, or, or every evening, in your case, it's all year long, as I understand it, so the, the morning pickup and the drop-off are at a different location than your address, but the same location every day. So we should be able to, you know, just specify, that, that's the bus they get on, pure and simple.
The only challenge I would find to that one, you'd have a middle school and a elementary, because if they're going to another location, that wouldn't typically be their home location, and that stop would not stop for a middle school, you know, that could create a problem.
Yeah, and that's...
They're Uber in either case.
Right, so you'd, you'd be at the same...
Yeah.
Both kids are...
So it seems to me like we ought to differentiate, first of all, if it's in the same school attendance area, then we can pretty easily do that at, at no extra cost, so, you know, whether it's grandma, or an aunt, or anybody...
We shouldn't have a policy to prohibit that, is what you're saying as well, right?
Right. We should, we should not have a policy to prohibit that, we should, we should provide as good a service as we can, as long as it doesn't cost more. Now, where it gets a little different is, you know, if, if the homeschool's orange and grandma lives on Donald Street...
Yeah.
Uh, now, that, that's a little different, and, you know, so that's in the, in the policy I foresee us developing, where do we, where is that line, and then is there an extra fee for that? Eh, you know, we ought to provide whatever service we can, uh, uh, that's good for our, the, the citizens of our district, 'cause they own the district, uh, regardless of the state guidelines, and, but we do have to make sure we don't spend a lot of extra money or a lot of extra time, 'cause from, I did look it up on, on, uh, maps or Garmin, and it's, it's twenty minutes from Orange up to Donald Street, twenty minutes back, so now you got forty minutes, I have a maximum of sixty minutes, uh, just for that, so that, that's not gonna work. But somewhere in between, we should be able to develop sensible rules, I, I would think, so I guess I would encourage the board to begin a Waterloo-specific policy that, that, um, allows what the state, uh, the state doesn't really disallow it, they just recommend it, right? I mean, it says the boards can do what we want.
But I, I would say that the other side of it in, is, is student safety, um, and that, I, I don't mean, please understand, I, I, I'm not saying anything with your situation with your sister, but it's, eh, eh, you wanna make sure that there's not even a small percentage of places where children are dropped off that's unsafe, and I think what the state, eh, what I gathered from reading through it was part of the requirement that it be licensed meant that there were regular checks by the state to make sure it was a proper environment for kids to go to, and so it provided that level of comfort. If we, if we don't do that, then I do think we should probably have a, a system where we would confirm that the, the placement was proper, whether it was...
Well, I, I would...
Family or something else.
I would suggest that's the...
Yeah, and that, that would be more difficult.
I would suggest that's the parents' call, it's their responsibility, and I would suggest that, that we have both parents or legal guardians or who, all parties that have custody of that student.
Yeah.
If they all sign, usually it's gonna be two, but if they all sign and say, "We want this cha-", 'cause we don't wanna get into any middle of any domestic disputes either, but if, if the parents say, "This is where I want my kid dropped off," I don't think it's Waterloo Schools', uh, really, uh, business or responsibility to do a quality check on every, I mean, we could do that on every home, I suppose.
But I'd want a lawyer's opinion on as far as the busing, what liability the district does have on that, than just to say they can go to anybody and anywhere at any time and the bus is okay to drop off. I think you need to check into that liability, and we've had that issue with our kids.
Yeah, we have, yeah, unfortunately, we have, and again, I, I don't bring this up to, eh, I'm sure a vast majority of the people that have the home placements, I think many that are applying for the daycare licensing now. It's not a problem at all, it's just we, there've been situations in the past, we don't want any in the future. And so my point in bringing this up is not to, um, eh, not to diminish the interruption it's been to your family and others right now, and I don't think Dr. Norris, nobody from the district, Mrs. Turner, I mean, they've all been working very hard recently to rectify this, 'cause they, they don't wanna make it more complicated for people as well, but the, the policies that we have in place, we decided we needed to enforce those, 'cause there, eh, there are reasons to enforce those, just talking about what we're, um, we were discussing earlier about safety, but it, it is something, we're looking at, eh, we've looked at busing more in the last six months, I have a feeling we will look at busing more in probably the next six months than we have in a long time, and this could be with the, the changes we're implementing on busing, possibly for next year, could be something that could be.
But, but, I, I think I'm hearing we're really not gonna do anything anytime soon, so is there no relief in sight for Mr. Taylor, all the others?
Well, from what I understand, your, your sister has applied for the state...
If, if she applies, if we finish all the paperwork and, and she becomes a licensed daycare, then she has to leave her day job, which costs us money, because she has to be there during the week, 'cause I watch the kids the other couple of days that, that she works, so, if she, if she goes and gets, becomes a registered daycare, she's gotta leave her day job, which is gonna cost my family money.
Okay, and the kid, I'm sorry, the kids are going to your house?
Yes.
Now, okay.
Yeah, I'm his sister's husband.
Okay, okay. Okay, I see, I understand.
On his day, on his day job, he has his, he's, uh, and when she has to go in the room.
Okay, okay.
Then he takes, make sure they get on and off in their seat.
Okay, okay, I see, I, the, the point I bring in, eh, I'm saying this and bringing it up and why we're discussing it right now is, 'cause we have been looking at it, and I think we will, I just wanna make sure, this is not a, eh, there are other factors into this that we need to consider going forward, but the fact that we're talking about it now, I think is a positive sign.
But I guess I would like a timeline on, you know, if we're not gonna provide relief, we need to say so, you know, Waterloo District is not gonna do this, uh, but if we are gonna provide relief, then I think we need to get on with it.
Well, we've already, we've already provided one big source of relief. Any parent that has picked up the papers and has started the process is qualified for busing immediately.
But you just heard, that's not long-term relief in this case. That creates another problem.
I'm not arguing.
And not every aunt or every grandma is gonna become a registered daycare, and it doesn't make sense for them to become that.
What, what I would suggest is, again, we, we're getting into the weeds a little bit here on the policy, for the process going forward in terms of what the board's gonna do, that's up to each one of us, including you, in order, when to bring stuff up. Typically, to do that, we go through the policy committee, um, and submit, if there are revisions that you, you suggest, we've gotta work through that process. I don't think we can act on anything right now.
We need to start, I'm suggesting we start that process.
But, yes, but we all control that, in, including you, you control that too, so. It's up to you, it's, it's up to each one of us as to what we, uh, we do going forward with the, what we wanna suggest is changes to the, to the policies going ahead, so...
And Mike, I would like to see what the state rule is for...
Yeah, do you have those copies?
Um, daycare, because I didn't think it had to actually be an operating daycare.
It's gotta be a license, it's gotta be a...
License, but not a daily operation.
No, not a day, it could be registered.
Right.
But in order to be registered, DHS has gotta come through and inspect.
That person has to be there.
Yeah, take them through, and my wife's there, has one of the kids, and she could get in trouble.
It's not his point, his point is to, to bill pay for something she has to do.
No.
Okay.
No.
That's not his point.
No.
Okay.
No.
What I, okay, what I think we probably need to do is check with DHS too. I'm fam- I'm unfamiliar on, eh, if it's just, maybe, do you list hours of operation?
So if you did that, you could list eight, seven-thirty to eight-thirty A.M.
And then, yeah.
Three-thirty to four-thirty P.M.
For...
I think, I think you can, and then...
We will.
Have a scheduled business.
Yeah.
Right, and that, they don't just stop without, they don't just show up, I don't think, no.
Well, they can make it, you know, if she's gotta work, and they say they're coming this time, it can make it harder to find her place, and so they're actually there too.
But would, would you, would you be listed on the registration as well?
No, I would not, uh, 'cause I would, I would, I won't be going through all the classes. You gotta take through a bunch of classes. Fourteen classes or something like that, which they make you go through to get help.
No.
I don't think that's, we're talking...
I will, uh, start on this tomorrow, Mr. Schmidt, and I'll...
It doesn't need to be tomorrow, but I just, you know, we need a timeline, but for me...
Well, you tell me the timeline, when do you want the policy up in front of you, and I'll put it up, I'll do it.
I, I personally would like to know about the DHS guidelines and all of that before we would say...
'Cause if there, if there are roadblocks in front of you that we can dissipate, I guess during that process, um, that might change it too, 'cause I, yeah, I don't know, may, and that maybe we, the district talks to DHS to figure out what their, um, what their criteria are, like on the inspections and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and it's kinda one of the things that worked, that was one of the suggestions is, um, they were saying, uh, non-registered but DHS background check, daycare, that they would not be registered with DHS, and said, hey, I've got information, you know?
Okay, yeah.
But they, it's not being accepted, because it's not, you know, it's a, it's a, even though you can, you can borrow from DHS, but they're not registered program, but wouldn't, uh, classify you as a class.
Okay, okay.
But I don't, you know, to me, it just doesn't make sense that every grandma and every aunt has to become a registered daycare center in order to take care of these kids for a couple of hours, it's just nonsensical.
I, I wouldn't say it's necessarily nonsensical from the state...
Get passed the Iowa legislature.
Well, I don't know who lobbied who and who paid who, or who contributed to whose campaign, you know, but we're not in the business of lobbying for registration of daycares. Every grandma and every aunt, that's the point, and it's a parent's responsibility, as long as both parents or all legal guardians sign, good lord, that should be good enough for us.
I guess, um, we do have guidelines we have to follow, and as a parent who had to pay a sitter to drop my kid off at school, I don't think it's the school's responsibility to, uh, work around just providing to meet all the needs of all of the daycare issues, because we have so many families in this district that's faced with that, and so we have to have some guidelines we're gonna follow. That's just a part of being in public education.
I agree we need guidelines, I'm just saying, we don't need to follow the state recommendation that everybody has to become a registered daycare center.
And I think as, as we go forward, we, we need to balance all those factors, including safety of the children, but also ability of the families to get their kids to school, it's, you need both. You need kids to be safe, but you also need them to be at school, and it's balancing a lot of different factors, and we'll keep working at it, till we get there.
Well, and even the liability issues with, I mean, the school, the busing was sued down that line, I believe, because of it, issue, so...
Yeah, the only thing I can guarantee is that we, we won't keep everybody happy, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll try, that's one thing I've learned on the school board, is, it's, that's impossible. Keep everybody happy all the time is impossible, but we'll take a look at it, and we, we understand the concerns, yeah, and we do need to get some clarification, and if we can help you too during the process of, of the registration, or what's out there, or meet the needs, those needs of the, um, safety of the DHS, but all, I assume like DCI background checks, they go through that, if you pass that, so, um, I assume that's a part of the registration process as well.
That's how the school board would say that, that number, is, does it just need to be the DHS involved in the background check?
Yeah, or is it a DCI registration, yeah.
If you're gonna allow them busing, probably it'd have to be an extensive process.
Yeah, and that's...
If it was a non-registered, where they just did the background check and said, yeah, it's, you know, they're okay, you know, they're not, you know, gonna hurt any kids or anything, you know, that should be, that should be good there, instead of going through all the process to take them to classes and paying all the fees for doing all that.
Yeah.
I would be willing to bring the information back to the board, but I wanna share with you, one of the stipulations with the difference in that DHS issue is that many of them are just DHS-registered, so that that agent, so that home can receive pay through DHS services, so that's why they list it as they do, but I'll bring all the information back to you.
Oh, okay.
Well, Cora, there's three different, you know, there's, there's childcare center, there's preschool, and then there's registered child development home, and I must confess, I'm not, I'm not up on what the difference between those three is.
The licensed childcare is the licensed center that you go to. A preschool, which we know a preschool, or a registered child development home could be one that receives services through DHS for payment.
Okay.
And if they don't receive that DHS for payment, they probably don't have to go through DHS.
No, they don't have to go through DHS, and that's a registered childcare facility where a parent then pays that provider.
Okay. I see.
Thank you, Cora.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all, and, and keep in contact with us too, so, yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Keep us posted, thank you.
Thank you.
Give you time.
Bye-bye.
And thank you for saying that about Orange too, the new building, it does look nice, especially when you see the old one there, yeah.
See the old school building?
I know, but it's, thank goodness for that one cent sales tax, yeah.
You go there for one auditorium, and I am, and you're sitting there.
Yeah, and you see this big, beautiful spacious school being built a block away, so, yeah, that one cent sales tax been a, been good, so, thank you. Alright, the next item on our agenda, um, is the, uh, is the start of our annual meeting, this, tonight is actually our annual meeting, it's a little different this year, um, because it used to be you'd have an annual meeting after school board elections, uh, which were held every September. Since the legislature went to four-year terms on school boards, it's every, uh, uh, two years, so, um, we, there's not really a change in the, um, complexion of the board. Uh, but the first item on the agenda is Exhibit A on page one, it's, um, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the treasurer's report for June thirtieth, two thousand twelve.
Will you approve?
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, in discussion, Michael Coughlin, if you could give us just some background information on this.
I'll just explain the exhibits that are here, uh, before you, on page two and three, uh, as you look at that, um, this is the certified annual report of the CAR that we have to provide every year. Uh, this is the balance sheet, uh, breakdown of assets, liabilities, and then, uh, fund equity at the bottom, and one of the components that you have looked at in the past is kind of, if you think of it in a cash basis, how much money do we actually have in the bank on, on each one of these different funds as you go across, and it's either eight or nine, I didn't count them all, um, but these are all the different sets of funds that we keep records for, for different purposes. So the, the general fund, as you're well aware of, the Student Activity Fund, the Management Fund that does the property and liability, uh, then toward the middle is the Sales Tax, and then the Pebble Fund, uh, the Debt Service Fund, that has a, a little larger number, because that is money that is being held in reserve to pay off bonds, uh, when we, when we, uh, sold bonds a year ago, and then also, there's a little extra money in there, because it got moved in there as of June thirtieth, and July first was the due date for paying, making a payment on the bonds, so, um, and then you get into the Enterprise Funds, which is the, uh, food service, used to be the daycare center, which is no longer in, in effect, and then, uh, the Trust Fund, um, is private donation that is in there for scholarships, basically. Um, those are the different sets of numbers that give you all the assets, all the liabilities, and then the breakdown of the, of the balance left over, and line thirty-one is basically what's in the bank in each of those funds, uh, not dealing with a, with, uh, budget allowance, the allowable growth, and authorized budget, this is purely, uh, what's in the bank. If you look at your own balance sheet for your business or your personal, that's, it would mirror that. And then, uh, the next page over on page four... And then, uh, the next page over on page four, uh, is a, um, different set of looking at that same number, which, uh, line one gives you basically the cash or fund balance from uh, the beginning of the year on line one for all those funds, and then on line three is all the revenues, five is all the expenditures, and then six is the ending balance, which is, matches all of the numbers on line thirty-one from the year before, so it gives you the same result under a couple, couple of different ways of looking at it.
Mike, the only question I had going back on the, I think it was a one cent sales tax? You said with, it's deposited June thirty, but then it's paid July one? Or did I, I'm afraid I misheard that, or I, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that, I didn't catch it.
When I was talking about the payment due on July first?
Yeah.
I was looking at the, when you look at debt service, about two-thirds of the way to the right.
Oh, okay, debt service fund?
Yeah, it's got not over nine million in there, there's kind of a large balance, but that is all committed money, five and a half million of that is just reserves.
Oh, oh, I see, I see, okay.
That sit there to, to pay for bonds, if sales tax did not come in, that's just part of, uh, the bond purchase, um, and then we also had, um, some of that money would be, uh, that sinking fund from the QSCB.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's bonds that are due July first, so some of the pay, so some of the money from, uh, the sales tax, which is right in the middle of the page, has been moved over to that column as of June thirtieth to make the payment on July first.
Okay, okay, I see, I see.
So it's a combination of about three different things of why that number is.
Gotcha, okay.
To nine million, but really what, what is required under the annual meeting, um, is basically saying that you see, uh, this part of our annual report to say how much money, what is the health of each of these individual funds.
On this date.
So you could see that before, basically, the board closes.
And that's as of July one?
This is as of June thirtieth.
Or as of June thirty, June thirty, okay.
Michael, can I ask you a question, the, on page four, the table, you know, by fund, is the, would the agency funds in the total column that are on the previous two pages aren't there, is there a reason for that that I'm missing?
No, I don't know why they don't show it on this.
Okay, but it's not that the, it's, it is the same, I was just looking at it, I thought, wait a minute, I'm missing a column.
They left one column off, and I'm, I don't know, cause I didn't put this together because I was gone, and I don't know if it was a fact that it just didn't print the whole page.
That's what I wondered, maybe it was just too wider, okay.
But all the other ones match up.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried. Then the next part of the annual meeting is the election of officers, this is on Exhibit B on page five, um, and it is for nominations for, um, uh, president and vice president of the board, and then we have, um, Exhibit C beyond that regarding the, um, reorganization of the board, but, um, this is for nominations, and first we'll go through for nominations for, um, president, um, and anyone can be nominated, no second is needed, um, and after that, uh, uh, we'll need a motion and a second to close the nominations and then have the election. So at this time, um, I will turn it over to, uh, our board secretary Pam Orndorfer, um, which, and she can start this process.
Absolutely, okay, so as Mike said, we can just take oral nominations and we don't need a second, so, oops, sorry. So our first order of, of business then is to take nominations for the office of president.
Madam Chair, I nominate Mike Young as president.
Any additional? We'll need a motion to close the nomination.
I move to close the nomination.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the nomination for the office of president of the Board of Education, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Mike Young has been nominated for the offices of president of the Board of Education, all those in favor of Mike Young, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And Mike will be the president, uh, nominations are now in order for the office of vice president.
Uh, I'll nominate Bernice Richard.
Do I have a motion to close the nomination?
I move to close. Second.
Keep it easy.
All those in favor of closing the nomination for the office of vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Bernice Richard has been nominated for the office of vice president of the Board of Educ, of Education, all those in favor of Bernice Richard, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay. You can go ahead and administer the oath of office, so you stood over there the last time. Yeah, yeah, we'll do both at once.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he did it in the corner last year.
Go to the corner.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of president and vice president of the Board of Education in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
I do.
Congratulations.
All right, then, and that will conclude this portion of the election of officers, um, then the next item is reorganization of the board, uh, and there are several motions, um, and actually I can, if you wanna just read them as one, the recommended motion is that the president of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Mike Young be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require his signature. And then secondly, the vice president of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Bernice Richard, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require her signature in the absence of the president. And finally, that the signature plate of Mike Young, immediate past president of the board, be authorized to continue as a valid check signature until a plate for a new president can be obtained. It's essentially moved, can we get that motion on the?
So moved.
All right, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? If not, all those in favor, uh, of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, and the chair votes aye, motion carried, before moving on to anything else, on the reorganization of the board, I didn't hear really any changes, like even getting down to seats, I didn't know. Seating for people, it's always changed, in the past, it's changed almost every year because typically there's been a new board member every year, um, at least one, especially when elections were every year, but.
Our creatures have it.
Could I request a sec closer to Lyle?
Can I, can I, can I, Jack?
No second.
Good answer, good answer, um, well, with no more, uh, reorganization, we'll then move on to the consent agenda. Um, tonight the consent agenda, it consists of the minutes of, uh, the September tenth, two thousand and twelve regular board meeting, our last school board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments since our last board meeting, and those are getting less, I guess as the school year started, everything's, uh, kinda falling into place, um, bills due and payable between board meetings, um, classroom space availability for open enrollment purposes in, um, this, in some way, it doesn't have any, uh, specific, um, information, it's more of, I would say a formality with, um, the open enrollment law for the state.
Very generic thing we do every year.
Generic recommendation, yeah, um, and then finally textbook adoption for the high school social science department, it's a text called Criminal Justice in America, fifth edition, at a price of two thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars, so that's the consent agenda, are there any items of those five that board members wish to be removed? I'll ask that Exhibit F, um, bills due and payable between board meetings on page eighteen be removed. Okay, and hearing no others, um, all those in favor of, um, all right, ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, excuse me, with the exception of Item F.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second, thank you, moved and seconded, discussion? If none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried, that takes us to Exhibit F, on page eighteen, bills due and payable between board meetings. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, and, uh, before we start discussion, um, I will abstain from voting on this matter, cause as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by, um, the bills. Any further discussion? If none, um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the chair abstains, uh, motion carried. That actually ends our, uh, action, not list of, uh, action items on the agenda, um, next we'll hear from Dr. Norris for the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Mr. Young, and I wanted, the only thing I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, uh, you're aware that last week we had our first meeting of the Twenty First Century High Schools Task Force, and we, um, we were scheduled, as you recall, to have a report to you last May, but, uh, in, in trying to make arrangements for, uh, committee members to visit different high schools and then come back and debrief on the visits and then have a report to you, we, we think our schedule was a little ambitious, and so this fall, we're, uh, we're just getting ready to lay out the visits, we've, we'd like to, uh, Lyle and Sue are your representatives on the committee, but we would, uh, there's enough people going, enough places, we'd like you all to try to join us to one if you could, and, uh, Pam has got those dates, and you can either say yea or nay to the dates we've got, or you can pick a different one, but we really want people to go experience these u- unique high schools. Uh, there's been a couple of you visit a couple of them at different times over the last three years, and it'll be really eye-opening and will allow you to make better policy decisions as we, as we move forward, so we hope that all the visits are completed, uh, I was hoping by November one, some of the visits are gonna have to go into the first week or two of November, which is only about six weeks from now, this, this semester's going by fast already.
Yeah, I think it's fair to note too that it wasn't the district's, it was the committee's decision to wait and hold.
Absolutely, absolutely, we gave them the choice of, of going, and everybody's schedule was really busy last spring, so this was gonna be better for almost everybody.
Well, we also wanted to visit schools that were in normal session, not at the tail end of last year and.
You bet. So just, uh, work with Pam, and, uh, we'll firm those up, and then we're starting to make, uh, arrangements right, right now as we speak, so I'm excited that people will get to see and experience different parts of the vision, and they can come together then, and, and then we'll debrief about it and see which model or two we, the committee would recommend to you all, that we keep the study alive and, and go forward that way. This, this committee isn't actually picking the model or picking a facility, that'll ultimately be up to all of you, the, the idea is which model should be under further study that would work in Waterloo, so, that's all I had, Mike.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Norris, uh, and now information from board members, um, and I'll start with, uh, Shanley McNally this evening.
Um, just wanna remind everybody that this coming Friday is the, our cross-town rivalry, the east-west football game, um, looking forward to it, and I think it's gonna be quite a game, so, come and, come and watch out at Memorial Stadium.
Thank you, Shanley, and Sue Flynn.
Okay, um, well, I just wanted to give, um, some real good, um, appreciation and, um, award to the East High Band. I just found out today that they received the Spirit Award, their band, in the last competition that they participated in, and I thought that was a really cool thing because the band has, um, they indicated at the meeting I was at, has doubled in size in the last three to four years, and, um, the leadership over there, the band, um, should be commended, doing an excellent job, and, um, I'm looking forward to watching them perform too, and I just wanted to, um, thank all of our staff for having a, um, good start to the school year, that, um, hearing a lot of positive things out in the buildings, that, um, administrators, teachers are all, um, on board, and I think we have a great school district, so, good job.
Thank you, Sue, and Bernice Richard.
Congratulations to the Trojans and the Warhawks for their game winning this weekend, go Trojans, go Hawkeyes, Warhawks. And also, um.
Hawkeyes might need a sip.
I also want to remind the parents that even though it's gonna warm up tomorrow, but we know the heat is turned on in the buildings at a certain time, and we've had some cool chilly days, so remember those sweaters and little jackets, because they may get a little chilly inside.
Thank you, Bernice, and Andrea Sparks.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, and Mike Kinsey.
Nothing tonight.
And Lyle Schmidt.
I attended the, uh, West Academic Hall of Fame induction of, uh, Ron Duncan and Luanne Kimer Rickert, as well as at the same event was the introduction, recognition of all the homecoming, uh, candidates, uh, is very impressive, first of all, the, you know, these two individuals had sort of the same theme, which is, you know, the reason we've been, you know, successful is we've had a very good foundation in Waterloo schools that prepared us, but then they also went through all the pitfalls they had to go through, and they were substantial just to show that it doesn't come automatically, you have to, you have to have some perseverance and character and, and, as well. Uh, the students, whether it was the, the band on the stage or the honor guard, or the, um, the students in the audience were all really impressive, um, very attentive, hopefully they, hopefully they were more attentive than I probably would have been at that age and, and that sort of message, but it was a real positive message, and so congratulations to, to, uh, that whole process and the administration of the school, it was, it was very well executed.
And Mike, um, to add on to what Lyle said, Ron Duncan was also recognized at his home church, which is my home church, on yesterday, and he gave great compliments to the great education that he received in the Waterloo Public Schools.
Oh, that's fantastic.
He's a great success story.
Mike, I had one more thing too, um, I just wanted to give, uh, great kudos to the East High janitorial staff. I've been there three times in the last month, and those floors are, you would not know there's twelve hundred kids in there throwing crap everywhere.
Is that a technical?
Technical term, but seriously, the floors, I just say it like it is, but, um, the floors were just perfect, I mean, and I was very impressed, so, just so they get a little, be sure I'll let Marty know too.
Nice to hear, so, yes, thank you, there are, there are good things going on, um, well, with that, uh, our next meeting is in two weeks, right here in the boardroom, on October eighth at six P M, uh, and I believe that concludes our agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned, thank you all.